All right, seeing that we have everyone here, let us call to order the Michigan City Common Council Tuesday, January 4th, 2022, virtual meeting. Let us all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and silent prayer.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as well.
All righty, Ms. Nyalov on the roll call, please.
Mr. Dabney? Mr. Dabney? Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Present.
Mr. Mack?
Present.
Ms. Deitch?
Present.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Present.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Present.
Mr. Simmons?
Present.
Ms. Jacobs?
Present.
And Ms. Tillman?
Present.
We have nine present and no one absent.
And seeing this is the first meeting of the new year, we have our election of officers, President and Vice President, do we have any nominations?
Mr. President?
Don Preswalinski?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Angie Nelson-Deitch for President.
And support.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing that there are none, Ms. Nyalov on the vote, please.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Now the unanimous vote, and I would have bet money that we would not be handing over a virtual gavel again. I received, I received the first virtual gavel from Councilman Fitzpatrick, and now you can receive the virtual.
Right. Thank you.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you. Well, we'll move on to the next item. I appreciate and thank you all for your support. So now I will open nominations for Vice President.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to nominate Don Preswalinski for Vice.
Can I get support?
Support.
All right, are there any other nominations? Seeing there are none, Ms. Nyalov on the vote.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, congratulations, Don.
Well, thank you to all my colleagues, and I will try to uphold the position to the best of my abilities. Thank you.
And I will be appointing Sean Fitzpatrick as the parliamentarian once we get going, I guess, in person, but yes, he will be the parliamentarian moving forward as well. So the approval of the minutes are going to be pushed out for the meeting from December 21st to the January 18th meeting, so that we can allow the clerk's office a little bit more time to get those done, so they'll be on the next one. Are there any reports of standing committees?
Madam President? Yeah, I would like to be in the Chairman of the Labor Relations Committee. We met with the FOP on December 22nd with the tentative agreement for 2022 and 2024, and then on 12/27/21, the Labor Relations Committee was advised by the negotiating team of the FOP that they did not take the offer to the full membership, rather than the negotiating team decided to reject the offer and asked the Labor Relations Committee to come back to the negotiating table. So that's where we stand right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other standing committees? Well, are there any questions? Anything from the committee, for the committee? All right, any other standing committees? Seeing there are none? Finance Committee.
Madam President, we did not meet. There was only one item on agenda, and it was pretty self-explanatory. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So on the claims docket, since there was no meeting, I'll just state what it is. There was Fund 2042. This is the claims docket for January 4th for $6,280, and it was for Charles Hendrickson Association Associates, and that was for survey, and that was done by the Engineering Department. Can I get a motion for approval?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Sean Fitzpatrick, Councilman Fitzpatrick, who is the second box?
Support.
I believe.
Thank you. Councilwoman Tracy. Any question?
Oh, sorry.
Any questions? All right, Ms. Nyalov on the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. Are there any reports of special or select committees? All right, seeing there are none? All right, so reports of other city officers and departments, we have Terry Greatham here from our, is our Director of Special Events, and he has a presentation for us.
All right, well, thank you to the council for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope everybody had a wonderful holiday season and Happy New Year to everyone. The reason I wanted to come before you is I wanted to introduce you to the major special events for the 2022 year. Before we release it to the public, I wanted to make sure that the council had an opportunity to see this, so hopefully the presentation is up on everybody's screen. So as you can see, there are seven major events planned for 2022. The Singing Sands Sand Sculpting Festival, the Kitty Parade, the Venetian Night Boat Parade, Michigan City Patriotic Parade, the fireworks, Oktoberfest, and the Festival of Lights Celebration. I'll start with the Singing Sands Sand Sculpting Festival. It'll be held June 3rd, 4th, and 5th in Washington Park. Singing Sands Sand Sculpting Festival is a three-day celebration of Michigan City's beautiful lakefront and beach, and will be held on June 3rd through the 5th to kick off summer. The centerpiece of the event will be a professional sand sculpting exhibition and competition, drawing some of the world's most talented and well-known sand sculptors who will create incredible works of art in the city's famous singing sands. The festival will include live music, featuring well-known local and regional acts, local food vendors, as well as art craft merchandise vendors will be on hand to create that spectacular festival atmosphere. This is just a outline of what the event will look like. As you can see, it'll take place, Washington Park in the area of North Point Pavilion. The actual sand sculpting portion of the event will be held in the area, what is currently being used as the volleyball courts. All of the sculptures will be there in that portion of the sand, and then in the parking lot, you'll have the art craft and merchandise vendors, as well as the food vendors, and then there will be two entertainment stages and areas for music, presentations from the sand sculptors and so on. The entire event, as you can see by the yellow lines, will be completely fenced off. This will be a ticketed event. People will not have to pay to come down to the park that weekend, but they will have to pay to get into the festival itself. Still working on the details as far as how much it's going to cost per person, but as I've said in the past, my goal is to make sure that Michigan City residents have an opportunity to buy tickets at a better rate than those people who are not from Michigan City. Next on the schedule, June 25th, we're bringing back the Michigan City Kitty Parade. This has been a very popular event over the years. Previously, it was hosted by the Michigan City Police Department. Chris Shigelsky was a strong force behind that. After talking with MCPD, it just made more sense to bring that in-house to the Special Events Department. Michigan City's youth take to the streets to celebrate summer and show their civic spirit. Following a theme, they will dress in costume and decorate their favorite bike, wagon, and yes, even their favorite pet, and enjoy a stroll down Franklin Street through the Uptown Arts District. Proud parents, grandparents, friends, and neighbors will cheer them on and celebrate the next generation in our spirited community. That same day in the evening, June 25th, in Washington Park, we are bringing back Venetian Night, Michigan City Boat Parade. This is an event that was held here many years ago. It is a very popular event at a lot of other lakefront, riverfront communities. If you've never seen one, it's quite spectacular. Venetian Night, Michigan City's own in-the-water boat parade, will be a night celebrating our beautiful harbor and the boats that fill our marina. Boat owners can participate by covering their boats with lights and decorations and dressing costume in tune with a specific theme that can change each year. Some of the themes that we're looking at for the next few years, red, white, and blue crews, which obviously is patriotic theme, haunted harbor, which is a Halloween theme, and then, of course, Christmas in June. One of the others that we're looking at is, instead of Pirates of the Caribbean, we'll do Pirates of Lake Michigan. So it's a fun event. I've been talking with the folks down at the Port Authority, they're behind it 100%, and a lot of the boat owners have already expressed an extreme interest in it, so we're hoping this is going to be a great event. Just to give you an idea of where it will take place, boats will come out of the marina, they'll turn towards the Franklin Street Bridge, they'll follow a path, make a turn around by the bridge, and then go out towards the lighthouse, and then turn back and come back towards the marina. The areas in blue along the pier and along the area around the Coast Guard Station and Fish Camp and Millennium Plaza are good viewing areas, and then the area around Millennium Plaza where we'll, is where we'll actually have a festival. We'll have party with food and beverages and music, and just make it just a night, hopefully a night to remember, and something we can build on for years to come. Then on July 2nd, Michigan City will host our Patriotic Parade. Michigan City celebrates our freedom and independence with the traditional march down Franklin Street. Residents line the street to cheer on businesses and organizations, as well as church groups, youth groups, school organizations, and anyone else who wants to show their community spirit and national pride. Last year, we had over 100 entries, and our, my goal this year is to reach at least 150 entries, so the idea is to grow it. We're hoping that we get through the COVID situation and more of the high school bans, we get more floats, also looking to partner with some of the other area parades to possibly team together and then create some competition for some of the different groups. Then, of course, July 4th, the skies over Washington Park lights up in grand fashion as we celebrate our freedom and independence with our annual fireworks spectacular. Boats fill the water and people pack the beach to witness summer's greatest celebration. We're running into a small snag with the fireworks this year. The Army Corps of Engineers, in the past, we signed a five-year deal, which cost the city somewhere around $400. To sign a new five-year deal is going to cost the city somewhere between $3,500 and $4,000. So trying to negotiate with them a better deal, and also possibly look at other launch locations, but we will have fireworks one way or another. So moving on, September 2nd through the 5th, Labor Day Weekend, yes, we will be hosting Oktoberfest. One of Michigan City's most well-known and longstanding traditions is back, celebrating Labor Day Weekend with the event that is the single most requested event by Michigan City residents. Oktoberfest will feature multiple live music stages, local and regional food vendors, and art craft and merchandise vendors from all over, using the foundation laid in the past to build a new, bigger, and better event. Yes, Oktoberfest is definitely back. And then to close out our large events for the season, will be December 3rd, the Michigan City Festival of Lights Celebration. Complementing the amazing Festival of Lights presented by the Michigan City Park and Recreations Department, Festival of Lights Celebration will build on the success of this year's event, which includes raising over $750 for Meals on Wheels and collecting over 120 toys for Toys for Tots. This holiday tradition will follow the Festival of Lights Parade and the official Christmas tree lighting ceremony ringing in the holiday season in festive style. We've changed the name of the Christmas, of the holiday parade to the Festival of Lights Parade, to match the actual Festival of Lights in the park. In the past, that parade has been run by the Michigan City Fire Department, but after speaking with Chief Legault and Chris Blake from the Fire Department, they've asked if the Special Events Department can take that over. So we are certainly happy to do that. So again, just looking at the seven major events that we've got planned for this next year, I know seven events doesn't sound like a lot, but coming from a one-man department, it's going to be a bit of an uphill struggle, but I'm very confident in what we'll be able to do. And then when you look at the fact that not just these seven events, but you add on the five events that the Michigan City Main Street Association puts on, which is the Shelfice Brew Fest, the St. Patrick's Day Parade, the Swayo Music Festival, the Taste of Michigan City, and the Flame and Flare Halloween Celebration in October, add in the AquaX Jet Ski Event and the Great Lakes Grand Prix from the Port County Convention and Visitors Bureau, also at the La Bznik Art Festival, and of course, the events at the zoo, the Brew in the Zoo and the Boo at the Zoo. We're in for a pretty spectacular year in 2022. It's 16 major events, and then obviously quite a few other small events with some small food festivals, church festivals, 5Ks and so on. So I'll be happy to answer your questions, but really excited about this upcoming year of special events.
Thank you for that. That was very good. A lot of good things to come, appreciate all the things that you've done. I thought the Festival of Lights was done superbly. It was exciting to see. So I'll open up the questions. I saw Councilman Dabney.
Yeah, real quick, just want to congratulate Terry. I used to see him in the morning, he was going to work over in Illinois, in Family Express all the time, and I'm happy he joined the team here in Michigan City. He's got some good events planned, and I'm sure he's going to do even more, so I'm happy to have him, and I think the city's going to be happy to have. He's going to do real good, real good, so I'm happy.
Thank you.
Right. Councilman Don Preswalinski?
Yeah, Terry, just a question with the Army Corps of Engineers. How come, what is it, a rental fee or whatever it is to use the pier? It went from $400 to $4,000?
Yeah, I got on a call with the Army Corps of Engineers, and basically, the people I talked to were similar to me there, the people that have to pass on messages like this. But basically, what they told me is administrative fees, they've been cut back on their budgets and don't have the money that they've had in the past, just a number of things that have led to it. But what they did ask me to do is go back and sit with Port Authority, the Park Department, and create a list of any type of improvements we've made to the pier itself, whether it be the life rings, any painting, the lights, anything we've done over the years to improve the pier, and they said they're willing to talk to us about negotiating a better price. Now, what that's going to be, I don't know, but certainly a 900% increase is a bit of a punch in the gut. We're already going to pay a bit of an increase to the fireworks company, Melrose Pyrotechnics, only because of the cost of bringing the fireworks over from overseas has drastically increased, but they've given us even smaller increase than they've given other customers because we've been longstanding.
Okay, so in the long run, we'll probably be able to do better than $4,000?
Yes, sir. I'm definitely going to make it better than $4,000, and I'm going to work with Chief Legault, the Fire Department, as well as the Park Department, and see if there's another alternative for us as far as a launch site, so that we don't even have to pay, we don't have to pay anything.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the council? Paul Preswalinski, Councilman Privilinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Terry, you know, we've spoken a few times about that Venetian Night, and I'm looking very, I'm excited about that event, but also all the other events that you have planned, and I'm glad to see that we're working on bringing that Oktoberfest back. I think that, that's been missing, and a lot of people do, they remembered Oktoberfest, and it was, it was a good gathering of individuals to enjoy that, the park, and, but I think it really did ring in people's ear about the Oktoberfest in Michigan City. So I just want to congratulate you, Terry, in, you know, moving forward, that I'm excited, and I'm especially excited about the Venetian Night. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Gene Simmons?
Yeah, Terry, the Venetian Night, is that competitive? Is that like a contest, best boat?
Yeah, we've, I've been talking with Socrates Gray from the Port Authority, he's also a boat owner, he participated in the past, I've seen it in other communities, and usually there's multiple classes, so you'll have your big boats, you'll have your smaller boats, you'll have sailboats. We'll break them into three classes, we'll come up with some type of a prize, we're not sure what that's going to be, whether it's going to be a cash prize, again, working with the Port Authority on possibly some kind of award or something that we can do with their boat slip, but yeah, it'll definitely be a competition, and in talking with Socrates, basically, he's on the 800 dock, he talks about the 800 dock and how they are better than the 700 and the 500. So we're not only going to go between boats, we're also going to try and create some competition between the docks and really build it up. The boat owners have expressed a lot of concern that there's not a lot of events for them, they come down, they put their boats in, and there's not a lot for them to do. So hopefully with the Sand Festival, Oktoberfest, and the Venetian Night, that'll get them excited and hopefully spend a lot of money here in Michigan City.
All right, great job.
Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, then, thank you so much, Terry, for presenting, and look forward to all the events we got coming up, so look forward to, thank you for being here today.
Thank you.
All right, before we move on to petitions, just to let the council members know, I believe Gail Nyalov, Clerk Nyalov, put the list of committee assignments in your mailboxes, so that if you could start identifying those that you would like to participate on. Also, we will do elections for those boards that council members are voting members of, we will do that at the next meeting. So if you plan on continuing on some of those, you'll need to be, it'll be a vote by the council to appoint you to those boards, so just FYI. Ms. Nyalov, are there any petitions?
There are no petitions.
Any communications?
There was no communications or correspondence received.
All right, thank you. We'll move to the first resolution. You know, you can do it by title only, and then I'll talk a little bit more about it.
Okay, a resolution by title only, approving a submission of a grant application by the City of Michigan City, by and through the Michigan City Police Department, to the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute, and supporting paying the local match for said grant, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
So this is a grant, as you may recall, last year, several of us co-sponsored an ordinance that put together a process for grants that are, that will require a match from the council, that they will come to us for approval prior to them submitting them, and so in that, they have to answer all these questions that were presented in that ordinance in advance, so everybody should have a copy, but this one in particular is called the Indiana Criminal Justice Institute for the 2020, 2022 Comprehensive Highway Injury Reduction Program, which is CHIRP, and they're looking for a local match of $3,900, and that $3,900, actually, the grant award amount is $17,820, and the local match required is $3,900, so it's not a one-to-one, just to give you, and that's in those attachments that were sent by Deputy Clerk Legault, and it talks about the benefits for the grant and the purpose of the grant that's presented in the resolution. Are there any comments from the public? I see Corporal Brian Wright. Corporal, did you have any comments?
I had no comment at all currently, unless there's any questions I can answer.
All right, and he is going to be handling the grant, so if there are any questions that come up from the council, we can address them then. Any other questions from the public? Comments from the public? You see any, Caleb?
I do not.
All right, comments from the council? Yes, Councilwoman Jacobs?
Yes, I have a question. It seems like the second half, the second page is not quite filled out, there's checkboxes not checked, and like, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how strict it's going to be, but you see that table at the bottom of Exhibit A? There's, you know, not, it doesn't seem filled out, so maybe it was just the way it was printed or something, but it doesn't seem completely filled out.
It was, one of the things that they did, they put it all in the body of, we put it in the body of the resolution, so it's actually in the resolution. So if you look at number two, and it talks about the benefits for the grant, and then the purpose, who will be responsible, they put it in the entire body of the grant, number five, six, seven, and eight, it kind of, that's, that's pretty much where it's described.
Okay, thank you. I was gonna, I just wondering why it looked blank. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Yes, Councilman Dabney?
I have a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve by Councilman Dabney and support by Councilwoman Privilinski. Ms. Nyalov on the vote?
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswalinski?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jacobs?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswalinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you. All right, Ms. Nyalov, would you read the second ordinance?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Madam Chair, could I ask for a five-minute recess, please?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
Take five minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, thank you. And welcome, Mr. Meyer, and we'll talk a little bit about that in our, in our comments about the attorney, so making sure Mr. Dabney is back before we move forward, and Ms. Tillman?
I'm present.
All right, perfect. Councilman Patrick?
I'm back, yeah.
All right, we'll move on to the next resolution by title only.
A resolution by title only, approving submission of application for a grant for the City of Michigan City from the Indiana Department of Transportation for the 2022 Community Crossing Matching Grant Program, supporting the local match for said grant, and this is also introduced by Ms. Deitch.
Yes, and this is for our annual Community Crossings Matching Grant Program, and again, going through the process, information had to be submitted, and this here is for the grant application that opened on January 3rd, the application- The application has to be submitted by January 28th. So I'll be asking Mr. Wright to present to us at the next, present to us before we do an actual appropriation. But one of the things that was, that is not in your packet, which I have a list of, are the streets. And this is for $1 million. The maximum amount eligible to receive is $1 million. The matching funds were budgeted in the 2022 MVH Restricted Budget. It says whether the Controller wishes to have a new separate fund, we already have an account for that. But I did want to point out a couple of things before we had any questions. And it was around the two funds that, again, that the money was budgeted from. If you look at, it just says local match grant up to 1 million, grant award amount, 1 million. And she said that it was coming from the MVH Fund and that it has all been budgeted. I know there may be a few questions. I don't see Controller Hoffmaster on here for any questions. Yep, I see her now. So I'm going to open up for public comment, and then if the council has any questions from Controller Hoffmaster, she'll be able to answer them at that time. So I would like to see if there are any, any comments from the public. Any comments from the public?
I'm not seeing any.
All right. We'll start with council comments. We'll start with Councilwoman Don Prisbalinski.
Well, a question for Controller Hoffmaster. How much money is in the MVH Fund now for 2022?
How much is in there? You want to know the cash balance like today, or I'm not sure what you're asking?
Yes, I, what the question is, is how much is in the MVH Fund for 2022 or year-to-date?
The MVH Fund has, right now, today, has a cash balance of about $300,000. I sent that all out to all of the council members earlier this afternoon. The cash balances and then the anticipated revenues for this year.
Okay, well, I didn't get a chance to look at it.
Can you share that with us, Controller Hoffmaster? Say it, you know?
Yeah, one, one second. Let me look up the email. Okay, well, there are no funds budgeted in the MVH Fund for the community crossings. There's two MVH Funds, I should probably start there. One is the operating fund that we use to operate the street department. The other MVH Fund is a fund that was set up by a change in the law back in 2018, and that's the MVH Restricted Fund. And that fund is funded with 50% of the MVH distributions, and that's used for the preservation of pavement. So the, we have $750,000 appropriated in the MVH Restricted Fund. But to answer Councilman Prisbalinski's question, we, the cash balance in the MVH Fund as of 12/31 was $217,150.21. We anticipate to receive throughout 2022.
And Controller Hoffmaster, how much of that is spent on the street department?
From the numbers I just gave you?
Yeah.
All of it?
Okay, so all that money right there is that $2,260,000 is going to be spent all on the street department. Okay. Right?
Correct.
Okay.
So that's operating and not the?
That's the operating. The MVH Fund is the operating fund for the street department.
What do we, then, what monies do we use for repairing the streets and the sidewalks?
I believe in the 2022 budget, there is, I don't, I don't believe there was any funds appropriated for sidewalk repairs.
Hey, how about street repairs, Yvonne?
Well, we budgeted money for community crossings.
That's the grant, right?
Correct.
How much is that, do you know?
We budgeted $750,000 in the MVH Restricted and $250,000 in the local road and street fund for a total of $1 million.
All right. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Paul Prisbalinski.
Yeah, I have some other financial questions because, you know, we were told during the budgetary process that our MVH Funds were going to be cut 20%. In a way, the statute's written is that half of that money that's allocated, which I'm taking that off that page that, excuse me, Yvonne sent out, off that $1,238,000, it, come, you know, it's about 620, 630, $630,000. So then you have a carryover balance of $217,000, which you had that together, and I come up with $868,000. My, my problem is this, is that we're, the, on the sheet or the email that was sent out, it says on there, transfers in from another fund. So what is the other fund that we're being asked tonight? That's what we're being asked tonight by that resolution, to more or less back whatever's going to happen, all right? An anticipation of these funds being transferred. So I'm, I'm looking at it. Where's the other money going to come from, Yvonne?
Do you want to know where the $1,219,339 is coming from?
Well, see, you told me.
It's coming from the Riverboat like it does every year. Because you are correct, one half of that, 1,1238,678, half of that is in the budget to go to the MVH Restricted.
Okay, so here's, here's my, here's my comment that I have a problem with. Number one, we don't have a list of streets. Number two is that last year, we were told that we had $1 million extra in the budget from the CARES money, funding the transfer, the bus department. And the prior year to that, we had $1 million of extra money, that was federal money, that we weren't told that we received, you know, under, through our questioning, it came out. So that means to me, there's $2 million floating around there, unappropriated. But now?
That's, that's?
Can I finish? Because I don't know where you put it, but, you know, these are, you know, numbers floating around here. So the other day, we approved a transfer out of the Riverboat Fund for $750,000 for the Park Department. And I understand that it was approved in the budget. But here's another problem I have with that. What happened to the parking fees from the Park Department? And why wasn't that transferred into their fund instead of taking that out of Riverboat? So? So? What I'm asking the council to look at this big picture of money is that we need to get some finite answers on how much money there is to, to use and where it's sitting. And I don't think that, see, the whole thing revolves around, oh, well, we, well, we'll use Riverboat money. So I can see using Riverboat monies for things because we have been doing that since we have gotten to Riverboat. But what's happened to the parking funds in these different funds? They had to be put into the general fund, so that's an excess. So what I'm getting at is there's money there. Why aren't we using the money, you know, and appropriating that money out of the general fund, out of the unused balance? I guess that's my whole point in, in, through the whole reminding aspect of this allocation. But I got a problem with, I have a problem with passing this resolution because you more or less were saying we are backing anything that's going to come, come to us for this grant process. And I definitely want to get community crossing grant money. I, I definitely want to do that and, and get as much as we can get out to match the funds. But we don't have that street list, and I got a real problem with not seeing the street list. And I think that would, personally, I'll, I have one other comment to make, but I'll, I'll, I'll say that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would you like, would you like me to answer?
Well, yeah, you can try to answer, but I still think that there's money floating around that we could use instead of going to the Riverboat.
Yeah, well, well, I'll start with the general fund, the $2 million or the, the million dollars in CARES money,
and then the $2 million that we got for the transit. That money did alleviate some of the, that did, that, that helped with the unappropriated balance in the general fund. And we ended this year with, I believe it's going to be somewhere in the neighborhood of, of a million dollars in the general fund. I'm not positive on that, but I believe we're somewhere in that neighborhood. Which, you know, the, the budget for the general fund is in excess of $20 million. So with an unappropriated balance of, of just a million dollars is not a whole lot. So that money didn't go anywhere. That money helped fund the 20-plus million dollars that's budgeted in the general fund. To move on to the Park Department, and I thought, I, I, since you sent back no questions on your email last week, we thought maybe you, you understood the parking money is already in the park operating fund. They took in, I believe, like $800,000 last year on a $3 million budget. So that 800,000 helps fund that $3 million park budget. So there, there's, there's no money just hanging out there. When, when we finish reconciling 2021 and get all of the 2022 numbers input and the finalized of the budgets from the state, I will send out another document to all of the council members showing the anticipated unappropriated funds in each of the funds like I did, like I did in 2021.
Okay, thank you, Controller Hoffmaster. Councilman Tillman?
Thank you, President Deitch. My, my question is, reading through the resolution, I would also like to see the actual list of the streets. I'm actually looking for one in particular to see if it's listed on there.
And I, I, you know, my apologies, I, I asked, I asked Engineer, our Engineer Jeff Wright to provide that and separate it out by the top 12. He sent a list over but did not attach it. There were, because there were streets from all wards that were threes and twos that he submitted. And he said that, and what I asked him to do was to separate it by the, the first goal, you know, the first, you know, the top 12 that he planned to submit, and then the remaining that are on the list. But he gave a full list, comprehensive list for 2022 in hopes that if we got any additional money that we would get to other streets. And I'm looking for that to send it to you. But there were streets in, in every ward, so I will look for that while I wait on the comments of Councilman Dabney as well. Are you, are you finished, Councilwoman Tillman?
Yes, thank you.
All right, Councilman Dabney?
Real quick, what, what Paul was referring to when he talked about the transfer that's going over to the, the Park Department? You know, we make that transfer, and we put it into the budget every year? And we can fix this, this whole thing if we made those transfers at the beginning of the year. Right? And then let's come back and when we see where the Park Department stands at the end of the year, let's say they finishing the black. Now we can say, okay, that money can just go right back to the Riverboat. Rather than we make this transfer at this time, now it's creating all this confusion. But if we did these transfers at the very beginning of the year, so now that money's there, they're operating, they're operating. And then we see, oh, they finished in the black. They don't need all of that money. Or they finished in the red, they don't need all, all of that money, but they need some of it. We can then just move that money right back to the Riverboat. That would be the easiest way to fix this, this, that whole situation. If we were to make these transfers right up front, just like I wish we would have done the rainy day fund right up front, you know, right at the beginning of the year. So we can always see an accurate balance in the Riverboat Fund moving along because the rainy day fund would have been taken out at the beginning. And I want to share a screen. Mr. President, would you allow me to share a screen real quick? On?
Yes.
All right, the screen two. Is everybody able to see resurface program screen right there? Can you see that?
Yeah.
Or can you see that list?
Yep, I can see the list.
The list of streets? This is the?
Is that the one this week? Is that the one he just shared?
I went back and, and found this one from a while back.
Okay, he updated it and, and most of, all those streets are pretty much, some of them are still on there. I'm looking for that one. I'm hoping, Yvonne, you can find it because I can't find it right now. But he sent it to both of us.
Yeah, but that right there is a list of all the streets, and I see, you know, fifth ward, second ward, third ward, and then one and sixth. I don't see nothing in the fourth and the first as of that one. But you said the updated one has something in the first ward as well?
Yeah, I, I'm almost certain it had every single ward was included, and I'm looking for it so I can put it up, pull it up on the screen.
Okay. Yeah, I had that sitting. I just wanted to show that. Trying to get out of the stock share here. I just wanted to show that, that's what I got from 2022, so there was this street that was sent to all of us. Thanks.
Yep, I'm looking for that email, Angie. I'll send it to you as soon as I find it.
All right, are there?
My phone is slow.
Yeah, are there any other questions?
One more comment?
Yes.
Yeah, no, just a que, just a question. Can we have the paving list for 2020, for 2022 sent to all the council members so they all have the same copy that everybody else does? So if you could do that, Angie, or?
Well, I'm okay with?
Get a hold of Mr. Wright and have Mr. Wright send it out. I'd appreciate it.
And let me ask you this question, Controller Hoffmaster. And we can pass this at the next council meeting, and it still will be in time, correct?
Correct.
All right, so I, I?
I just, I just forwarded that list again to you, Angie.
Okay, awesome. So I would entertain a motion to table until the next council meeting.
Back in.
No, I would entertain a?
Oh. A motion to table till the next meeting.
All right, we have a mo, a motion by Councilman Don Prisbalinski and a second by Councilman Paul Prisbalinski until? Um, until the next council meeting with the, um, uh, uh. With, uh. Um, getting the list of the streets and, um, I've asked, uh, Count, uh. Engineer Jeff Wright to provide us a one and a two, the list that will go. First and then a list of the remaining streets if we have additional funding to get to those. So I spoke to him today, so. And with that, will you take the role, um, Count? Uh, well, actually, this is a, this is the table, so. Could you do the role? You're on mute. That's one of the banished. One, thank you, um, I.
Mr. Don Prezvelensky?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons?
Hi.
Ms. Jagus?
Hi.
Mr. Paul Prezvelensky?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Hi.
Mr. Dabney?
Hi.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Hi.
And Mr. Mack?
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Miss Nyla. And just know that, um, you're on mute is one of the, uh, banished words, uh, of twenty twenty two, so. We gotta make sure we do better about that. It was on the list. I saw it on.
Well.
So, all right, all right, Ms. Ms. Nyla, can we do our first ordinance on first reading?
An ordinance on first reading by title only and a s- ordinance establishing salaries for the Police Department of the City of Michigan City. For the calendar year twenty twenty two, and this is introduced by Mr. Don Prezvelensky, Mr. Paul Prezvelensky, and Mr. Dabney.
Are there any comments by the sponsors?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, uh, what I want to do is read this ordinance in its entirety. Except for the, uh, salaries on the bottom. Uh, so that way, you know, the 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 council understands exactly what's going on here. And, uh, anybody in the public. So it says, uh, ordinance establishing salaries for the calendar year for the Police Department for twenty twenty two. Whereas the salaries for the Police Department must be set. By ordinance pursuant to IC thirty six dash eight dash three dash three and whereas. The City of Michigan City by and through the common council, common councils, Labor Relations Committee. Have attempted to negotiate a new contract with the Indiana FOP Labor Council. And have engaged in numerous communications and meetings with the FOP since April of twenty twenty one. And whereas on December twenty second, twenty twenty one, the LRC and a negotiating team of the FOP met. And tentatively agreed. To terms of a new contract for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four. However, on December twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. The LRC was advised by the negotiating team of the FOP. That they did not take the offer to the full FOP membership. Rather than negotiating team decided to reject the offer and asked the LRC to come back to the negotiating table. And whereas until a new contract is negotiated. All the terms and conditions of the current contract continue, thus the need. Currently exists for the city to set the wages for the Michigan City Police Department. For twenty twenty two in the same amounts as were previously set in twenty twenty one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the other sponsors?
I would like.
Yes, Councilman Prezvelensky.
I would just like to also, uh. Communicate the. The, uh. Situation with the, uh. Police Department and I don't, since we're still in negotiations, I, yeah, this is, uh, more or less a formality. And, uh. There, so they can get their. Uh, checks and get their pay. Under the language in the contract because they'll be working under last year's, uh, contract.
All right, thank you. All right, um, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
I'm not seeing any.
All right, um, comments from the council? Any comments from the council? This will be held over for second reading at the next council meeting. All right, Ms. Nyla, um, second, uh, the first ordinance on second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only prohibiting the use of MVH funds for constructing. For capital repairs of streets with the boundaries of city TIP districts and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prezvelensky.
A comment from the sponsor.
Yes, uh, Madam Chair, I would like to, uh, um. Ask the city clerk, I would like to make an amendment on the original ordinance by substitution. And I believe that, uh, clerk has a, you know, you have a copy of it, don't you?
Yes, and I did, um, send it out to all council members this afternoon.
Could you, uh?
The motion, um, to, um, se- to replace by substitution is their second.
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 All right.
The second was.
Uh, Councilman Don Prez- Prezvelensky, yes.
Don Prezvelensky.
Could you read it in its entirety, Gal?
Oh, no.
Requiring an ordinance, um, requiring the use of TIP funds. For street improvements within the boundaries of city TIP district eligible for the TIP funding. Whereas the past funds of the City Motor Vehicle Highway MVH fund have been. Used to construct and repair streets with boundaries of city various tax increment finance TIP districts. Whereas based on the Pacer. Inspection and scoring results, it is evident that there are numerous streets. In those parts of the city outside the boundaries of the TIP district that are very poor and dilapidated condition. And whereas the common council finds that there is insufficient MVH fund available to repair, restructure. Reconstruct all of the streets, including those within the TIP district. Within a reasonable period of time and whereas under law. If the Redevelopment Commission determines that a street improvement project will promote economic development or redevelopment in the city. TIP funds can be used to fund pavement and removal and replacement in street reconstruction projects for streets. With the TIP districts boundaries. Which the city engineer recommends be implemented due to. Low Pacer ratings and whereas the common council finds such repaving. Reconstruction and construction of streets in the TIP district promotes the economic development. And redevelopment in the TIP district of the city. And whereas the common council finds that is the best interest of the city and of citizens that the TIP funds. And not the MVH funds be used for those projects eligible for TIP funds. So the MVH funds can be used for needed street repairs. In the areas of city outside the TIP district and for those repairs in the TIP district. Which are legally fundable with TIP fund, e.g., pothole patching, crack sealing, chip sealing, chip. And seal and paving not associated with pavement removal. Now therefore, be it ordained by the common council of the City of Michigan City, Indiana, that one. Other than a pay for contracts that be already awarded based on use of the MVH funds, no MVH funds shall be expended to pay. For any pavement removal and replacement or street reconstruction projects. Legally eligible for the TIP funding for streets within the TIP district boundaries. Which the city engineer recommended that implemented due to the street's low Pacer rating. Without the prior ex- express written approval of the common council for any such expenditure. Number two, the Redevelopment Commission prepare and approve the necessary fundings. That the TIP funding for the pavement removal and replacement in street reconstruction projects. For the street within the TIP district boundaries, which the city engineer recommends. Be implemented due to the street's low Pacer ratings will be promoted economic development or redevelopment. In the respective TIP district in the city. Number three, the Redevelopment Commission include. In its annual planning for use of TIP district funding that the street improvement project in the TIP district. Which the city engineer recommends be implemented due to the street lower. Pacer ratings and appropriate available TIP district funding. Funds to pay for those projects. This ordinance will be effective upon passage by the council and approval by the mayor. And this is introduced by Mr. Paul Prezvelensky.
All right, um, any other additional, um, comments? Um, Councilman Paul Prezvelensky, before I move to.
If I may, Madam Chair, um. This this ordinance was reconstructed and I think that it it is, uh. Very applicable because under the different chapters in the Indiana code. Um, this can be implemented and that we would also. Increase our share. And guarantee our share of the full million dollars from the community crossing grants. My perspective on this ordinance is not to become a adversarial role. Or anything of such, uh. Uh, thought. Or even promoting that thought processes, but to get to use the TIP money. In areas. That qualify and then in the ordinance it also. Leaves a, uh, open, uh, area that. We can approve using MVH funds. If we are asked. By the city engineer and I think this way, by doing this ordinance. Will bring everybody together and get more done in the city. In all these different areas, if it's in the TIF or it's a south end or the middle of town. Because i- if you remember in our workshop. Last year that Mr. Wright said. It, this is a mon- a monable, very, uh. Formidable task to get these streets up to snuff in the city. Because they've been neglected. They've been neglected everywhere. They, and. We need to just come together and find the common ground. And, uh, move forward on this. And I think as for the betterment of the neighborhoods. And the business districts that the TIP money is used, wh- wh- there's a pot of money in. You're looking at using. You know, when streets are, uh. Designated. Two hundred thousand, two fifty, whatever it might be, but. And I'm talking about neighborhoods. I'm not talking about a business. Uh. Retail. Commercial area. Because, uh, just like on the south end of town in that TIF. Yeah, there's need, there needs a lot of work to be done, but we still even haven't gotten to the point to identify. Who owns the street out there, what we're gonna do to take it out. And incorporate it into the Walmart lot and the other lots on Cleveland Ave. So. We need to sit down as a group and come up with a plan. And I don't think that, you know, here's what I feel or think, that every year. So far. And I I said, uh, to my brother earlier today that. It was oversight on my, on my part. And when this grant needs to be put in. But this was the same thing that we did, the same avenue that happened last year. And and my whole theory on this is that. We will get more money from the state to do more paving in the neighborhoods. And we're not tou- I'm definitely not looking at this like robbing the piggy bank. I think that since they're in the TIP, the TIP areas are established on the criteria. To. Use that TIP money for the key word. Redevelopment. And it's not only in retail neighborhoods. It's in the neighborhoods that they're established in because that's one of the criteria of the legislation. And also, if you go back even further. When. The name was changed, it originally came out as a federal program called Urban Renewal. And then, I don't know if it was in the eighties or the se- eighties, late. Eighties that they changed the name and they created. The TIF zones. To use and let the Redevelopment Commission oversee them. Which was, you know, formed through Urban Renewal. And Urban Renewal was to do what? To get rid of blight? To do things in the neighborhood, to take down buildings that were blighted? The concept didn't change just because it's a TIP district. Because the legislation is there and.
Ms. Prez- Prezvelensky, did you get my message?
No, I didn't.
We're, we're, this is a sponsored comments. Can we, um, get, uh, uh, comments from the public and come back to you?
Sure.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Um, ca- uh, comments from the public? Any comments from the public?
Hi, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I read Councilman, uh, Dabney's, uh, screen share that he did about the the roads that are gonna be done. Um, we gotta get Paz Road and then Kefer Road both done. Both both those roads that they take people to and from both Michigan City High School and the Marquette Athletic Complex. Uh, we constantly host other schools for our events and I find it to be really embarrassing that they have to drive on these such roads and then in such poor conditions. Um. I feel really strongly and passionate about that and that's all I have to say. I don't, part of the portion of those roads is the county's responsibility, part of the, is the city's responsibility, so. We just need to get that all worked out. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kalavich. Any, um, other, um, public comments? Um, Mayor Perry? I didn't know if you had a comment.
Uh, none here, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other, um, public comments? All right, um, council comments? Is that you, Mr. Dabney?
Here you go, I'm off, um, I was muted. At first I want to start by talking about, you know, that the name of this whole ordinance is to. Habit MVH funds. Uh, to be used into TIP districts, first of all, MVH funds, there are neighborhoods that are in the TIP districts. And these people. Pay the gas tax that fund that MV- that the MVH. Just then, you know, comes back to the city, uh, out of the state. So it's unfair to ask these people to pay their taxes, pay the gas tax. Uh, registration fees also go into this and then tell them, no, you can't have that because you live in a TIP district. And then last meeting, we talked about the the roads that were actually paved. And the roads that were on the paving list. I showed one of those earlier. I want to share my screen again. Uh, and I'm gonna go ahead and and pull this up right now. Tell me when everybody can see. That that paving list right there? Can, can, can somebody wave and say they see those? All right.
Yeah, I see it. And I, I, the list of streets, I do have the, yeah, current list.
But this was the fall. This is fall, right? And if you look down here, it tells the wards that were paved in the fall. Five, 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 two, 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 and six. The argument was made that second ward was being neglected. Last time or last, uh, meeting. And then. Here's the one that we already saw that was part of the list is. Angie, uh, Councilman Dyke said this has been updated. This is two thousand twenty two. Five, 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 all the way through, two, 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 then three, then six. Nothing in the first ward, nothing in the fourth. Okay, but the 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 argument was made that war two was being neglected. Pull that down. This right here is. The north or the south TIF. Everything in blue. Unfortunately, all of the streets aren't listed on that, so I'm not gonna focus a whole lot of time on it. But this is our TIF district and you can see some of the roads that are in there, Village Road, there would be Mark Spur Lane in there. This is Ohio. Um, all of these streets that are in this TIF district would be. Prohibited from using MVH funds. People live on those roads, people pay those gas taxes, so that's. A punishment or penalty. You're taking their tax dollars, taxation with no. You're taking their tax dollars, taxation with no representation. And, and then here is the north TIF. Obviously, you know, I was gonna concentrate on the north. The north TIF district. Look at all of these streets, look at all these neighborhoods in this blue that would be prohibited from receiving those MVH funds. These people pay their gas taxes, look through here. Sixth Street, Fifth Street, Fourth Street. Let's go over here, here's Cedar, here's Lafayette. East Eight, all the way over to Holiday over here, parts of Ohio Street, Elston. All of these people pay taxes to the MVH fund. And this ordinance is telling them that we cannot pave their streets because they live in a TIF district, but they pay the gas tax. And then, everybody's heard about this, this case. Mr. Meyer can probably jump in on this, that happened over in Munster?
Yes, and, and we do have some, a, some correspondence between Attorney Meyer and Attorney Serenak in reference to the case.
So, yeah, so this was that they used the TIF money to originally put the streets out there, to construct these streets. Then, the, 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 the city, yes, wanted to say, well, they should be responsible for the upkeep. I.e. paving. Here's the, the conclusion that came out of this. I believe this is from the Supreme Court. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Meyer. For all the reasons we conclude the commission has standing to bring a decree of judgment, we further conclude that the trial court did not err in determining that the Indiana statute does not permit the use of TIF funds to continue maintenance of completed redevelopment projects.
Yeah, this is Jim. Number one, the Munster project had absolutely zero to do with streets. It was in reference to a park.
It was referenced to a park. Says completed projects, Jim. Uh-uh.
I, I understand, but.
Mm-hmm, no, no, no.
When you read cases, you have to understand the background and you have to know how they fit in to the myriad of circum- can be covered. And that has to do with a park, nothing to do with streets.
Completed projects, question.
You are referring to the existing version of the ordinance. The current status right now is that there's a motion pending to be voted on to amend by substitution the ordinance, which has different language in it. I don't know if you read the amendment, but it basically changes the original tone of the ordinance to allow for use of MVH funds inside a TIF district for costs regarding maintenance of streets that cannot be covered or paid for with TIF funds.
Right, okay, can I stop you there?
And you're, you know, yeah.
Can I stop you there? And that is contrary to the whole name of the ordinance, prohibiting, prohibiting the use of MVH funds for the construction.
You're reading the wrong ordinance.
Yes, it's, it's the, it's the amendment. So we're, we're.
But now we can use MVH funds in the TIF?
Yes.
Ah, so we're not prohibiting anymore, we changed that?
I'm positing that you, somebody, you may pass this ordinance without the passage of the ordinance. You know, then they're, or the amendment, then it would maybe not be.
So this is off the table in regards to restricting somehow the use of MVH funds in TIF districts? Why we even having this conversation? Why even have this ordinance? What's the purpose of the ordinance then?
The ordinance, as I understand it from the sponsor, is to have TIF money used to pay for street improvements, destruction, reconstruction, that are eligible based on capital expenditures and not maintenance, they're not, you know, fixing potholes or sealing cracks or doing chip and seal. Uh, or just paving. Those are not what's covered by his, the amendment to the ordinance. So, I mean, Mr. Paul Prespolinski can speak for himself, but my understanding is what he is trying to do is getting more TIF money to be used to pay for the major, let's call it improvements, to streets inside the TIF districts in order to get them up to the proper standard.
Okay, I understand that. But here's, here's my thing, we have two, we have two representatives.
Before we, before we go back and forth, I just wanna make sure, and Gail, I sent you a note. Are we still on the amendment? We're still on the amendment to, to.
Yeah, we need to do the vote. We have a motion and a second. We need to take a vote.
On the amendment, and then we can come back to comments on the second reading.
And not, not to go back and forth, could you, could you, like, what does the amendment do again? Cause I, I got it late, I was at work. What, what did the amendment do again?
I just read it in its entirety.
Mr. Meyer, I just, just talked about it. I asked, what does the amendment do?
Okay.
I asked.
Yeah, so, so, yeah, can I, let me, let me make a comment so that, and, and it's not from me. This is from, and, and Jim, you can jump in for this amendment. But there was a correspondence between Attorney Serenak and Attorney Meyer. And I'll, I'll just, I'm not gonna go into all the details of it, but they, they still have some issues that they view as problematic from both the legal and policy perspective. And they didn't, he didn't get a chance to really review it so that he met with Attorney Randy Rumpala to, to put a few thoughts together. And I did talk, talk to Councilman Privilinski about a possible workshop to, to discuss this after, after tonight, before third reading. So, but they did share that, but we just got, we got it late today from the redevelopment commission. So I just wanted to share that as well. All right, Councilman Paul Privilinski, did you want to add anything to that?
No, not at this time. I, I'd like to vote on, you know, get to the vote.
Any more comments, Councilman Dabney, on the amendment?
I was just, like I said, I just needed a, an explanation. What does it allow to, just, just wanted Jim to say that again, I'm sorry, I didn't. But without going into back and forth, I didn't hear exactly what he said the amendment allows it to do. He just, just, yeah, one last time.
The amendment does several things, and Gail read it verbatim. So I assume you've listened to it. But, the, in reference to the point you were making about not allowing TIF funds, or excuse me, MVH funds to be used in TIF districts as stated in the original version of the ordinance, I said that the amended version, the proposed amendment would be more accurate, allows use of MVH funds within TIF districts for road repairs and maintenance that are not fundable with TIF money.
All right, so that's for the, the amendment on second reading. Any, any other comments? Yes, Councilman Mack?
And I'll be real quick here. And my point I, I had with the first one and, and also the amendment is that I personally believe that what, what we've had right here and what we've witnessed and what we're gonna continue to witness are these types of arguments, discussions, and debates every year, council and RDC, over which roads and which streets get the money. And that's just some days that are gone by in my mind of the ability for cities to put their number one priority into street paving. I don't think it's a bang for the buck. I think the process that we, the state has in place is it, and it, you know, what's the scary part is to me, is when we begin to track, lock in RDC and TIF money that is for growth and development and some of the other things that we could really be doing in our community with, you know, with some vision and some, some courage, is locked in to second place because we are going to prioritize the spending of some of these budgets with streets. And I, I just don't believe that is something that we should do for the future. So, that's just my two cents.
All right, any other comments from the council on the amendment? Councilwoman Ziegus?
Yes, I still think this will way overcomplicate repaving streets. And in fact, I can't believe that we're not going to vote to improve the streets unless we know which streets are going to be improved. We're not making the judgment here, it's the Pacer study. And if anything else should be used, is how much the streets are used. So, I don't think it's up to us to have an opinion on which streets need to be paved. It has to be done by an objective manner. And I think this will way complicate repaving. I think this is gonna add such layers of legalities and things. So, like, I'm, I'm against it, I'm against the ordinance, and I'm against the amendment too. Thank you.
All right, any other comments on the amendment?
Madam President, may I make a comment?
Yes.
Today, the selection of streets outside of the first year that I was in office, when we did York Street, just one block and brick. Today, the selection of streets has been made purely by the Pacer rating system without any pref, without any consideration for personal preference, neighborhoods, wards, precincts, politics, whatever. It's been simply from selecting the worst streets and moving our way up to the best, best streets. That's, that's what has been done today. Been done strictly by city engineer, Mr. Wright. Thank you.
Thank you, and I do have that list now, and I'll make sure we get that out to the council. Any other council comments? All right, we'll move for the vote for the amendment.
Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Hi.
Mr. Simmons? Mr. Simmons?
There he is.
Nay.
Ms. Ziegus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Hi.
Ms. Tillman?
Nay.
Mr. Dabney?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Nay.
And Ms. Dyche? Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
We have four in favor and five opposed. The amendment fails.
All right, so, so the amendment fails, so we are on second reading from the original ordinance. Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, I am going to have a workshop, and I would like to table this. And I'm gonna schedule a workshop next week for this to clear up some of these questions that keep coming up on legality of what, what we're trying, what, what we're trying to do here. So, I would move, I would move to table this till our next council meeting and on second reading.
We have a motion to table by Councilman Paul Privilinski and a second by Don Privilinski. Ms. Nileup on the vote?
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Shakers?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Prespolinski?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Mack?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
And Mr. Don Prespolinski?
Aye.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Well, and I will work with Councilman Paul Privilinski to do a, a joint workshop with the redevelopment commission.
Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on to our next ordinance on second reading. That was tabled at our December twenty-first council meeting until today. Ms. Nileup?
An ordinance on second reading by title only, amending Municipal Code Section two dash four five seven, Commission on the Social Status of African American Males. And this is introduced by Ms. Tillman.
Any comments from the sponsor?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. This amendment to Section two four five seven of the Commission of the Social Status of African American Males, I don't, I hope everyone had the opportunity to read it. And during some of the meetings that we've had with the social status, which I serve as the liaison, there has been concerns and everyone or majority have addressed their concerns as to why do this amendment? Well, we were provided by the chair an updated, a recommendation for updating of the bylaws for the social status. And as some of the amendments that was originally done to the bylaws for the social status, one of them was in regards to who's allowed to be on the commission. And in that, it indicated, right now, if you don't mind, I'd like to read it so that everyone to have a clear understanding and that the public knows, and go on. Where it states, whereas, common council has become aware that it is in the best interest of the city of Michigan City and the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males Commission that certain provisions of the commission's enabling ordinance be amended to require all members to be residents of the city of Michigan City. Now, therefore, it be ordained by the common council of the city of Michigan City, Indiana, that the last two sentences of Section two dash four five seven B two B of the Michigan City Municipal Code shall be amended to read as follows. All appointments made must be bona fide residents within the city, within Michigan City, and all members shall continue to serve until their successor is appointed. This amendment shall only be effective for all appointments made after the date of this ordinance becomes effect. All other provisions of Section two dash four five seven shall remain in full force and effect. So again, the purpose of this is based off of this where a lot of the boards and commissions that we have in existence right now, going back, reading through what their bylaws and resident requirements are, a lot of them says that they have to be residents of Michigan City. There's very few, very few that says a resident of Lepore County. But because of this strategic organization which deals with the social status of African American males within our community, it is better to be seen or to have representations of individuals that is actually within the city. Currently, to my understanding, there is three, approximately three commissioners that are not residents of Lepore County or and/or not residents of Michigan City. Not to negate the importance of any individual sitting in these positions, or any positions for that matter, that they all bring something to the table that can be utilized. So with this amendment, I'm asking that for the social status of African American males, that that board be made up of residents of Michigan City. Those who may currently be in those positions and those seats that are not, that I would ask that, with your passion and what you bring to the table and the support that you can also still remain on as, as one of the following subcommittees. So that wouldn't exclude, that will still allow the participation and the support and the information and programs that you can share to bring to the table for the social status, that you can still allow your skills and talents, your resources to help those that is here within the Michigan City community. those that is here within the Michigan City community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. Um, are there any comments from the public?
Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, I have a, a, a question for Ms. Tillman. Uh, you, when you look through the ordinance that created the Commission on the Social Status of African American Males, was it defined legislatively that that commission had the authority and right to create subcommittees? Because if it didn't, then I think that needs the, um, the ordinance needs to be amended first to allow the commission to create subcommittees. You've got to have a trail on, on everything that is allowed to be done. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, um, and to answer that, I will go back and I will provide that information. If that is not within um, the ordinance of the bylaws, then we can make the necessary amendments to reflect that, if it should be in there or not.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Council lady, gentlemen.
Thank you. Tommy?
This is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I've read this ordinance in its entirety, and I think the language in it is very confusing. Let me pull this up real quick. Um, at first it states, um, uh, the commission shall consist of fifteen voting members. I think eight are appointed by the council, seven are appointed by the mayor. It says, each member shall be a resident of the city and shall be appointed by the group or which she or whom represents. But then it defines all the different organizations and who they, they ought to be. I've considered being a member, but I can only hold two seats, so Mayor will appoint you, that's currently appointed by a county, city, county fly seat, and the council appointee that's uh, that Rodney McCormick currently holds. But then it goes on to say, um, all appointees must be bona fide residents of the county. And all members shall continue to serve until the concession is appointed. So, you know, it's confusing. First it says you either gotta be a resident of the city, then you gotta be a resident of the county. You know, it's either one. You know, they made that economic decision for themselves when they decided to establish their residency, that, you know, that, uh, there's a number of pros and cons of both residing within the city and outside the, and outside of the city limits. You know, I think all the board and committee of, of appointees ought to be, uh, they ought to be city residents. The main reason is because that, uh, if you live outside the county, you don't vote within our municipal elections. Um, that's just how I feel about it, thank you.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Kalavich, Tommy. Um, any other um, comments from, from the public? All right, any um, comments? Is, is there anybody else? Okay, any comments from the council? Yes, Councilman Press Balinski, and I see you, Councilwoman Tillman.
Yeah, uh, as far as this commission goes, uh, and I believe if, you know, if you live in, i- if you're on a commission, you should be, you should live within the uh, the city limits. So, i- if that's what uh, Councilwoman Tillman is asking for this ordinance, that needs to be changed. Uh, I certainly support that. Doesn't make sense to live outside of a community and be on a board that lives, that serves that community. I don't know, it just seems to me that you don't have the grassroots uh, uh, spirit. I mean, what would you want to do living in South Bend, but you're on the social status of uh, African American males in Michigan City? Doesn't make sense to me. So, yeah, I would support if that's what the, the councilwoman's asking. Thank you.
Um, Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, thank you, um, Councilman Don Press Balinski and Mr. Kalavich? I hope I'm pronouncing it. Kalavich, thank you. Um, and yes, that is the purpose, to answer your question, that is the purpose of this amendment. Because wait, where it indicates in one portion of the amendment, the ordinance, it says Michigan City and then resident. This will rectify for it to just specifically be for residents only. And, and I understand, as I said before, I'm not negating anyone that is on this commission. Um, and even though they have uh, city ties, I ask that you continue those city ties. And if, according to ordinance, if we are still, if we're able to have subcommittees, that you will stay on and carry out those duties or responsibilities and bring what you have to the subcommittees.
Thank you, any other council comments?
Just one more question for the councilwoman. Yeah, uh, Councilwoman Tillman, where do these, uh, the three individuals you're, you're speaking about, where do they live? Do you know?
Am I allowed to disclose that information?
Some are outside, some are outside.
They are outside of the city limits.
Okay.
I'll just say that. They are, based off of the information of their contact, they are outside of the city.
Okay. Um, Councilman Mack?
There we go. Um, just, I just wanted to start off by saying I, I'm, I'm going to vote against this. Um, I don't know if it's in the best interest of the city. Uh, one of the individuals that we're speaking of, it's public knowledge, that, that board is a public board, uh, that the meetings are all published. And uh, my um, opinion basically comes from watching the last two meetings. One of the last two meetings or both of the last two meetings. Uh, and Ms. Tillman, I'm not sure you were there on either one of those. Um, but it, it just smacked of uh, something other than genuineness and a logic that Michigan City residents are far more capable of addressing the needs of the black community. And the, and the status is a group that was initiated in the state of, in Indianapolis, matter of fact. Um, we chartered it to bring it here, so I personally think it's a larger issue than just Michigan City, its social status of African American males, and we're transient, and, and, and it's keeping track of a lot of things. They've got their own bylaws and, and, you know, much, much more in depth than I know. Um, but I think this is a uh, local, I think this argument was political, and I, I challenge any of you to watch the last two meetings where this was discussed, and you can make up your own mind. That's what I'm basing my opinion on, is actually having watched those last two meetings and heard discussions uh, surrounding this issue. And one of the individuals that are impacted in this is probably one of the more educated, heartfelt, uh, passionate people about the advancements of young black males in Michigan City that, that we probably ever had. Um, and another thing is, uh, you know, I, I'm for Michigan City residency requirements, but I'm for, for jobs. And it just strikes me as, you know, we, committees are, you know, let's require people to live in Michigan City, but to actually have a job, you know, you can live anywhere, and so we, we farm out the jobs. Uh, you know, it, it just strikes me as that, but uh, if you did the, my main, my main objection is having watched the last two meetings, and they are, they're on, they are on our page for anybody to watch. Um, and I just, I just think it's uh, more involved than just, will be a better quality if we limit the pool to Michigan City. That's just my comments.
Uh, any additional comments? Councilman Dabney?
Yeah, um, Tracy was explaining it, and she, she, uh, Councilwoman Tillman was explaining it about they could stay on and be on a subcommittee. Like, if you're just on a subcommittee, doesn't, doesn't mean you're not a voting member or something like that. That's what I mean?
Yes.
Okay, um, now, since this is a public group, can we talk, say who the three people are? That would be made subcommittee members?
I mean, I, I don't know if we would even have to do that, just from a perspective, from the, from a council perspective, in the sense that those three may decide they don't want to be on a subcommittee, so do we really need to have that discussion? Probably not. Um, I just, we probably should um, let that, that decision be made, because it sounds like they can stay on here until, they can stay on, if you read what she said, I think she said that until a replacement, they can stay on until, you know, however long, from what she read.
If I may, uh, Madam President?
Yes.
It indicated, it states that this amendment shall only be effective for all appointments made after the date of this ordinance becomes effective.
Right. Yes, Councilman, um, Mack?
But those, those three individuals, their dates are up, uh, tomorrow, today?
No.
Coming up early, right?
They're coming up soon, so.
It's coming up soon, so their appointments are done. So, the other people are being appointed, I mean, and, and if you watch the meetings, you'll see that that was uh, because when I watched the meeting, I thought I got, I gathered that uh, it was the belief that that ordinance was already in place, that those people were illegal uh, at the time of that conversation that being held. And it turned out that those people weren't illegal, and now, you know, we're, we're making it uh, illegal to be a non-Michigan City resident. So, you, you'd have to watch these meetings and garner your own, I mean, uh, you know, that's, that's, that's the feel that I got for it. It just does not feel uh, right.
And, and this has been tabled multiple meetings, and that may have been part of the uh, the, the issue with their, their, uh, their meeting and what they were having. Um, any other comments from the council? Uh, Councilman Fitzpatrick?
Uh, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just listening to the comments, and I'm wondering, would it be feasible if a non-Michigan City resident was able to serve on this council, since we may not be the best ones because we live here? Just a thought.
Thank you. All right, any other um, com- uh, comments from the council? If not, we will have.
Madam President, may I make a comment?
Um, go ahead, um, Mayor Perry.
Thank you, very quickly, just, I, I would suggest that um, you give this just a little bit more thought, because once you amend a document, uh, it, it goes in a file, and then it's kind of out of circulation and out, and you're not discussing it. When you talk about uh, members of the commission being only Michigan City citizens, I would say that, that one of the most qualified ladies that I know, well-educated, uh, would be our current school superintendent, Dr. Barbieson Watkins, who, to my knowledge, lives in Potawatomi Park, a town of its own. So I, I think you might have very qualified applicants and maybe commission members in the future that could live in Long Beach, uh, Trail Creek, or Potawatomi Park, that derive their living within Michigan City, but but they, they're not within the city limits, but they would really be an asset to the commission because they're so highly qualified. Just my thoughts, thank you.
All right, thank you, um, and I know we're a little bit out of order, um, and for the first virtual meeting, we'll, we'll let that pass, but um, we'll hold this over to the No problem.
I apologize for that.
We'll, we'll hold this over to uh, third reading. All right, uh, we don't have any more ordinances. Um, now we're off to new business, so we have some FYIs. Uh, the council has seven appointments to the Commission on Social Status of African American Males. Um, the incumbents are Ms. Albertine Allen from the Minority Health Partners, Pastor uh, Jakara Williams from the Ministerial Association, um, Mrs. Felice Kelly, Felicia Kelly, Hope Community, uh, Mr. Willie Millsap, Swanson Center. We've received a letter on his behalf, Mr. Rodney McCormick, a Michigan City resident, Ms. Latanya Troutman, representing the N-DLACP, Pastor Dennis Carroll, um, Human Rights Commission, and Ms. Tracy Tillman, council appointment, and all these terms expire on two fifteen, twenty twenty-two. Um, and I think that, have we received any additional letters? Um, uh, Mrs., uh, Ms. Nyla?
No, we haven't.
All right, and uh, under unfinished business, well, under new business, it's not on here, but I, I make the comment. Um, I plan to uh, reach out to Attorney Meyer to discuss a month-to-month um, um, service from him until we uh, identify a, another uh, attorney. Um, so I just wanted to make sure I mention that under new business, and in my comments, I'll talk about the process to uh, for us to move forward with an attorney. Under unfinished business, um, council has one appointment to the Youth Leadership Commission, which um, need to still uh, amend that ordinance to, to make some more at-large um, positions, um, since we have not been able to get a response from our Catholic High School. Um, are there any comments from the public?
Uh, Madam President?
Yes.
If I may, I have to go back to the Social Status Commission on appointments that are expiring. Uh, last week, I received uh, correspondence, I can't, off the top of my head, not having in front of me what was written, I believe it was via telephone, that uh, Mr. Corley is stepping down from his position on the commission, so that is one more position that will be, uh, need to be felt, uh, filled immediately.
All right, thank you. We'll add that. Um, any other comments from the public?
Yes, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. First, I want to congratulate Councilmember Angie Nelson Deitch on being the, appointed the president of the council again. I think you were the president during your original tenure on the council, so this will be your second time around, I said, I believe. And, oh no, okay, well, I might be wrong about that. But uh, but uh, I also, uh, I'd like for the mayor to set a tentative date for both the mayor's ball and the mayor's golf outing. We, uh, this is in response to Mr. Greatham earlier. Last two years, we haven't had that. I know, uh, for the mayor's golf outing, that typically took in about twenty thousand dollars a year, and those uh, proceeds were, were, were split between, always split between two worthy nonprofits the mayor would choose. So I think it's really important that we reestablish those two events. Um, other than that, I would like to thank you and have a good day.
Thank you.
Madam President, may I respond to Mr. Kalavich?
Sure.
Uh, Mr. Kalavich, I very much want to have both the uh, mayor's ball and the golf outing. Uh, we're watching the COVID numbers every day, and I believe if we watch, we all watch the news, we see that they're climbing. Uh, as much as I like having these events and they benefit organizations in Michigan City, I feel it's my pri- first priority and responsibility to protect the people of Michigan City. But I will assure you that if at all possible, if the numbers go down and we stay, and we stay in the orange, that we will have these events.
All right, thank you, thank you. Um, any other uh, comments from, from the public? All right, comments from the council? All right, Council, uh, Don, Councilman Don Press Balinski?
Thank you, uh, Councilwoman Deitch. Uh, first of all, I would like to welcome back Councilwoman Tracy Tillman on her uh, absence there, and uh, I'm sure she's doing well, and uh, just glad to have you back, Tracy, and uh, and all, all the blessings and prayers, you know, to get you back and to get you healthy. Uh, appreciate having you back and your input. Uh, second of all, what I, what I'd like to do is to talk about the snow equipment for the plowing of Franklin Street sidewalks and the Michigan Boulevard sidewalks that are supposed to go in conjunction with our Snow Ordinance forty-six oh four that was passed by the city council on October the nineteenth of this past year. Uh, as I've been informed, none of those, those two plows for the sidewalks have been ordered yet. A purchase order has not been received yet, and that the administration is still trying to figure out uh, which route they're gonna go yet in purchasing these uh, pieces of equipment. Uh, with that being said, the lead time on those pieces of equipment, I'm sure are going to be two to three months, what have you? Well, we've already spent uh, almost three months. two to three months, what have you. Well, we've already spent, uh, almost three months now doing nothing as far as getting those pieces of equipment here to, to, to do what we have to do. Uh, this is an ordinance that was passed by the city council. Uh, i- if other people, uh, don't like what the council did and don't want to order the equipment, then they need to, uh, tell us that. And, you know, we'll go into, do whatever the council needs to do in order to protect the public that have to use those sidewalks during inclement weather, or as we had a snow event last year when we got eight inches of snow, and those pedestrians, those citizens were put in danger because they had to walk in the streets. You couldn't even go to a bus stop. You had to stand in the street. You know, I don't know why people don't want to believe that this will work, but it'll work. And also, uh, the city, in accordance with this ordinance, and I'm, I'm going to read right out of the ordinance here, uh, that the owners or occupants, uh, that, that live in these, in these business areas, that they're going to be notified by the city that they have to, uh, uh, twenty, that the city is going to clear the sidewalks, and the city's going to provide one winter notice, uh, for each property owner or an occupant that, you know, the city's going to be come, coming by within twenty-four to forty-eight hours before they, uh, clear the sidewalks. And the sidewalks to be cleared are the ones on Franklin Street, Michigan Boulevard, and, uh, Highway twelve to, uh, the Blue Chip Casino. Uh, I don't know why the equipment wasn't ordered. Possibly the mayor can, uh, expound on that, since he's on the, uh, meeting this evening. But, uh, to, to, to sit and wait three months and not even get a purchase order in yet to get this stuff ordered, uh, you know, I, I don't know what, what to say or how, or how to explain it, or, you know, what to say to the public. What I am going to say to the public, from me as a councilman, I supported this ordinance, and I expected that once this ordinance was passed, that the equipment was going to go and be ordered shortly thereafter that, and not have to wait until January to order this equipment. We already have the specs on it. The street superintendent has already gone out and gotten prices on it, because he was at our meeting, uh, in October when we passed this, explaining the details, explaining the cost, and explaining the two machines that we needed to get to do this work. But I can tell the city residents this year that if you can't walk up and down Franklin Street, or if you're walking out in the traffic because sidewalks are piled up with snow, the city council has tried to do the best that they could possibly do. Uh, two more things. I want to thank the Park Department for their wonderful job of getting, uh, Washington Park put into the magic of lights, the festival of lights that they do. They did just a, uh, a fantastic job this year. So I want to thank, uh, Mr. Shin and his group in the Park Department. And just to the citizens of, uh, Michigan City and to my, to my council colleagues, that I think we have to, uh, take a, a better look, a better approach, a more positive approach to twenty twenty-two and make this the year that Michigan City is really going to step forward and, and be exciting and do some great, great things. And, and what I want to say to the public is that when you, when you get out of bed every morning, you know, I think we have to have the attitude, this is kind of attitude I have, is what can I do to make my community better? What can we do to make Michigan City a better place? Whether it's calling, uh, the police department to report things, uh, code enforcement, uh, get involved with non-for-profits, or get involved with a, a neighborhood group. Where you want to go out and clean the neighborhoods up, or just go out and take a walk around a block and, uh, you know, clean things up. But I think we really need, we really need to get involved and get inspired to do great things. And, you know, one saying that, that I go by is, uh, to make the difference, you're the one that has to be the difference. You're the one that has to get out there and make things happen. And so I just want to challenge, you know, all the Michigan City residents that in order for us to make the difference, to make this a great hometown, you have to be the ones to step up and help and get out and make the difference. Let your council members know what you want in your neighborhoods to make things better, and that's the way things are going to get done. And, uh, that's what I have to say, and I just want to wish everybody a happy new year, and let's make Michigan City in the year twenty twenty-two a great one. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Privilinski. Councilwoman Tejas.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just be, I'll be brief. I just want to talk a little bit about coronavirus. Everyone's tired of it. Everyone's sick of hearing about it. But, uh, what happened is our, our Eighth Street Health Department had to shut down for walk-in testing. So now you need to make an appointment, and the best place to go would be www dot coronavirus dot in dot gov. So it's tough to get a test, and without knowing if you have it or if you're not contagious, you know, I think you just need to be careful and try to avoid crowded indoor situations. So I'm wishing everyone to stay away from that virus. I know people say, oh, it's just like, like flu, but a lot of people have long-term effects, and I don't wish that on anyone. All right. Thank you, and happy new year, everyone.
Thank you. Um, Councilwoman Tracy Tillman.
Thank you. Um, I just want to first and foremost say congratulations, um, Madam Deitch and your presidency, and Vice President Don Privilinski, and Parliamentarian, um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick. I am looking forward to a prosperous twenty twenty-two, and I wish amongst all of you as well the same. And I just wanted to say to, um, the city engineer, Mr. Jeff Wright, thank you. Kudos. Um, the council members was asked to provide a list of streets and sidewalks to him and to where we would go out and we would provide that information of those streets for him to come out to use the pazer, to see if those streets or sidewalks actually needed to be redone. So those that's on that list, I, I've seen that list. I just knew that there was something may have been updated since then. So just moving forward, I just want to say for the fifth ward, um, if there are any, if any of my, any of the constituents reach out to me and they have concerns regarding the streets or sidewalks, that's our responsibility. That's our duty to report that to Mr. Wright, and then he takes it um, to the next step and utilize the pazers to see if those sidewalks or streets actually needs to be done based off of the pazer. Um, so again, I just wanted to say, uh, thank you, Mr. Wright. Keep doing what you're doing, and everyone be safe on those streets and sidewalks.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, just wanted to say happy new year to everyone, first of all, and congratulations to Councilwoman Deitch and Councilman Privilinski. Look forward to working with you this year. I know, uh, your leadership will be, you know, what's needed around here, so, um, looking forward to that. I know I've worked with, uh, Councilwoman Deitch, and I came in under Councilman, uh, Privilinski as president, so looking forward to it. And, um, I also like to, uh, thank Councilman Mac for the job he did in twenty twenty-one, you know? Being someone that sat in that seat before is not easy. You think you can just get up here and everything is just, you know, a breeze. It is not. There's always somebody pulling your coat tail. There's always somebody upset with you, and, you know, it, it takes a lot to do that. So I still want to, uh, thank Councilman Mac for that, and, um, uh, that'll be all. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Gene Simmons.
Yes, first of all, I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Mac for filling in, uh, that presidency, uh, seat for two thousand and twenty-one. I'd like to thank, uh, Councilman Deitch. Con- congratulate Councilman Deitch on her presidency for two thousand twenty-two, as well as Vice President Don Privilinski and Parliamentarian, uh, Sean Fitzpatrick. Uh, looking forward to a great year.
All right. Um, any other hands? I haven't seen any hands. Any other, um, council comments? Councilman Paul Privilinski.
I'd too, uh, wish everybody a happy new year and, uh, congratulate the new officers. Looking forward to working with you, you guys and all the council members, and I just want to say that I'm looking forward, uh, moving forward on, uh, creating a end to the, uh, uh, controversy on how TIF funds can be used, because I know that personally, I think people are being misled, that they keep constantly quoting this Munster case, which had nothing to do with, um, street maintenance, or, no, we gotta, we gotta remove that word maintenance, because that is illegal for them to do. It's reconstruction. But what they were actually doing, because we couldn't read the whole Clark case, is that they were actually did work at a Munster park, and then they were doing maintenance, and that's what they got cited on. So I, I would like to thank Mr. Myers for his extraordinary work in helping with getting the fog away from this TIF, uh, use of funds. So what, I would just like to say that it's not one neighborhood against another neighborhood. This is all about Michigan City, and it's about getting the most that we can get out of the, uh, CC grant money. But just to clarify, one section of the ordinance that was voted down, and this is in Therefore Being Ordained Section One, other than to pay for contracts that already been based and use the MVH funds, no, eh, excuse me, no MVH funds shall be expended to pay for any payment removal or replacement of street constructions project legally eligible for TIF funding for streets and TIF districts. The city engineer recommends, recommends being implemented due to the street's low pazer rating without the prior express written approval of the common council for any such expenditure. So there is language in the ordinance to, to deal with, uh, TIF areas. So I just want to say I think Jim did an excellent job on that ordinance revision. So thank you, Jim, and, uh, as we move forward, fair is fair. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Councilman Dabney.
Thank you. Uh, and I couldn't sit by and listen to any more of that. Uh, because the redevelopment commission, attorney, uh, he sees this another way. Um, so this needs to be figured out between the TIF, what has to happen in regards to, uh, streets and paving within the TIF, using TIF money and everything like that. This is still, it is, in, in my mind, still an unsettled issue. Um, and there was an email that, that, that came out, came out late, that, uh, he did not agree. Uh, so this is still, you know, to be determined. It'll be, um, figured out. So we'll see, uh, what happens, and I'm still sitting here and looking at the case, looking at the conclusion, and I heard what the attorney said, but reading the conclusion. And like I said, the, the attorney for the redevelopment commission, he's, he's, he's agreed. Uh, but anyway, I want to wish everybody a happy new year, uh, brought to a good start, uh, this year, so looking forward to, uh, going through, uh, this year, getting some good things done.
All right. Any other council comments? All right. Well, I'll, I'll end and, um, say thank you for your support tonight. Um, congratulations, Don, um, and Sean. Um, thank you, Michael, for everything you've done over this last year, and um, a couple of things that we have outstanding, um, you know, um, fundamentally, you know, I don't agree with, um, you know, the, the conversation with the MVH funds, but I think it's a, it's a opportunity for us to have a, a discussion, and, and that's what me and Councilman, um, Paul Privilinski, we've been going back and forth. Um, he knows how I feel about it, but I figured if we could get the redevelopment commission, um, and like I said, the back and forth, we did receive that correspondence um, late this afternoon, to, to have the conversation so that everybody understands and can make their own decision, I think that's okay. Um, you know, and I think there's a way to get through it, and I will get those streets out to all of you, and it does include the first, second, the first and the second ward, um, the fifth. I think the only ward that's not included is the sixth ward. Sorry, Gene. Um, but, uh, other than that, um, with the, uh, attorney, um, situation, I, I know I've received um, some feedback from, from two different attorneys, but, um, what I would like to do is just to extend this out. If you all, um, know attorneys that have municipal experience, I'm asking that they, um, submit a letter, um, to the clerk's office with their expressed interest in, and, um, being a council attorney, and then we'll have a workshop and let them present to us so that we all can, um, hear from those attorneys and make a decision. So that'll be forthcoming, but we will give them until, um, January. Go ahead, Don.
Oh, yeah, I just, uh, I've never been through this process before as far as, uh, getting a new council attorney. But is there, is there a process, uh, that, you know, you send out a, uh, not a feeler, but some type of letter, you know, uh, some process?
There has, it's been, I, I talked to.
I, I, I know, but I, what I'm saying is, you know, if we know somebody, you know, you know, let them know that we're looking. Wouldn't, would it be something like Amber Lepage would send out a general, you know, a job description, uh, to a, a lawyers association to look for attorneys in, in that matter? I mean, I don't know how Jim Myers, how he would, because Jim was here when I got here, so I don't know how you're, how he got on the, uh, committee. But I mean, Jim, do you have any insight on, you know, what would be the process? I mean, not that I want to get rid of you, but I know you want to retire, but just to help us out.
Yeah. I, I talked to Jim for a little bit. I know he's on the line. Um, we, we talked about it, uh, a little bit. I think we can, uh, put something formal out. Uh, not really, um, a formal publication in a newspaper, but there aren't i- as many municipal attorneys that, as we think. I think it's a, a small network of folks, and, um, even in talking with some of the local ones, they, they said they're, they don't even have the capacity. So, um, I know of two, um, that have reached out, and, um, I think, uh, what we can do is formally say you have until this date to contact, uh, to send a notification to the council president, to the clerk's office by a certain date, and then we'll move forward and see what, how we want to handle it. If we only get one person, we have them come present, and that's, then that's where we're at, but, um, I don't think there's a process, and, um, I'm going to be sending an, an email to Jim first thing tomorrow or tonight, asking him to, um, to give us, uh, some type of month-to-month retainer until we, um, we actually finalize an attorney.
Okay, what, so what, what was the date?
I was looking, that's what I was thinking. Uh, I, I was going to say, since today is the fourth, that we can give until, you know, Friday the twenty-first. Um, and, uh, to see what we get, and then schedule some type of workshop and then move from there.
Twenty-first, all right.
Yeah. Um, and then the other thing, um, that I just wanted to, uh, to, to mention is that I did submit to, uh, the attorneys to, to Jim and to Amber, um, a framework for, uh, creating a new committee. Um, I've talked to a couple of you about it. Um, it's to establish, uh, to establish a Public Health and Gun Violence Commission. Um, to, you know, we've had several tragedies that have occurred over this last several years that, um, we need to figure out a solution, but we need the community's input in doing that, and, and some funding to uh, make sure, you know, there are programs that, you know, make sure, you know, there are programs that, you know, are doing those peak hours. I've been to a couple of webinars over the last six weeks and met with a couple of municipalities to discuss what they've done. So I've already submitted the framework for it, and so more to come. It will be on the next agenda because, you know, gun violence impacts us in many ways, and it's mental health. It's traumatic. It's, you know, our community members, you know, going through grief. But it also impacts the neighbors that are hearing the gunshots and experiencing it, and then us going to funerals for our family members, and so this commission, for those that, you know, say we need to be doing something, I urge you, when this comes up and we create this commission, that you step up to be a part of it and be a part of the solution. And so I will end on that note because we want to have an awesome 2022, but in doing that, we all have to work together to make that happen, and I think this will be a cause that we all need to wrap our hands around, especially with COVID and what Councilwoman Giegus mentioned. You know, with these numbers and us being holed up in our homes and, you know, kids at home, longer hours and access, we just need to be mindful and be our brother's keeper. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
To adjourn.
So moved.
To adjourn. Yeah.
Here's your virtual gavel, Mike.
All right. Have a good night.